We're putting in 190 more.
Good morning and welcome to Board of Supervisors' August 5th meeting. I'm gonna call this meeting to order and ask Craig Slay if he will pray for us.
Father, thank you again for the day that you've given to us. Father, we don't take anything for granted, especially the blessings that you have bestowed on us. Father, how you take such good care of our community, and you provide for us. Father, we acknowledge all of that. I thank you, Lord, that these men, where they lack wisdom this morning, Father, you have already promised it. We'll ask, you will give it abundantly freely, you don't withhold it. Father, I pray for wisdom being part of them. Father, we're approaching a time where decisions have to be made about who's gonna be in leadership in our county. Father, I pray that our community will rally, they will effectively use their right to go vote. Father, I pray for those families, Lord, that are seeking elect office. Thank you for the sacrifices that those candidates have made and the families have made. Father, I pray for them, that regardless of the outcome, Father, they will be able to look to you and know that you're in control, Father, that your will has been effective. Lord, I pray for all of this in the name of Jesus.
Amen. Amen. All right, under our first section, we'll go to public comments. And we have a church with us that we would like to recognize. Craig, would you help us here?
I know I've got a resolution here somewhere. I don't have it in my hands, Steve. We may have to pass and come back to that one when Ms. Cannon gets in here.
Here she is.
Here she is. Got it in her hand.
Never doubt, never doubt.
Yes.
All right.
This is a wonderful occasion that we get to celebrate here this morning, gentlemen. We are commending and congratulating the Evergreen United Methodist Church for 150 years of Christian service to the citizens of Rankin County. And I've got a resolution that I want to read for the public. And so we have representatives of the church here, and we're excited to have them. I'm gonna read this resolution, Mr. President, and then we'll give them an opportunity to speak. Whereas Evergreen United Methodist Church in Brandon, Mississippi, will commemorate and celebrate 150 years of Christian service to the citizens of Rankin County on August 10th and 11th, 2019. Whereas the members of Evergreen United Methodist Church, the vance of the Lord's call and minister to our community in the name of Jesus Christ, will step fast resolve to meet the physical and spiritual needs of our citizens and love for the people of our community. Whereas Rankin County, Mississippi, is blessed to have longstanding church organizations like Evergreen United Methodist Church, whose members form the backbone of our community and whose influence in our community maintains Rankin County as one of the premier communities in the state of Mississippi. Whereas Evergreen United Methodist Church is to be recognized and commended for its unwavering commitment to the proclamation of the Gospel of Jesus Christ, the imparting of the truth of Scripture, the comforting of the afflicted, and encouraging of those who are disheartened and downtrodden. Whereas the members of Evergreen United Methodist Church rightfully celebrate a long and distinguished history of faithful service to Rankin County through its church activities and its community service projects. It is with great pride on behalf of all citizens of Rankin County that we recognize and commend the members of Evergreen United Methodist Church on the occasion of their celebration of 150 years of ministry to the citizens of Rankin County. That's resolved, that they have August, it's signed by all the supervisors, and it's signed by the magistrate clerk. And it's with great congratulations that we tell you guys, we're so happy to have you in our community.
Craig, can we have a picture?
Absolutely, that'd be a great idea.
If all the people that are here from Evergreen would come up... While you're doing that, Evergreen is in my district, and it's something we're proud of. If you'd have seen the celebration they had this past weekend, it was outstanding. And have great people, great members. They let us use their church for a polling place. It's a big polling area, and some very great people. Ms. Betty Ward Fletcher, former president of Jackson State University, is in our presence.
I don't think I'm gonna be able to see for a week.
Thank y'all. Thank you very much. Yes.
To the supervisors and the board, we thank you. We've been waiting on this day for 150 years. So we're finally here. We think that Evergreen Community and School is a beacon of light in our community here in Rankin County. It was when there were no schools for African-Americans that Evergreen Church started a school. It was when our community, there were no water resources, and they started a water association. If you live anywhere on Tricam Bridge or Andrew Chapel Road, and you're a member of the Evergreen Water Association, it was started in Evergreen Methodist Church many years ago. So we thank you for acknowledging the efforts that we have been putting forth. Our theme is "A Charge to Keep We Have", and we intend to honor the charge of moving forth and building our community to be all that it can be. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Again, to the supervisors, thank you all so much for honoring us and recognizing our 150 years. We look forward to our celebration and hope that you all will join us in our gala. We have a gala this coming Saturday at 6:00, as well as our church anniversary celebration on Sunday at 10:00 at Evergreen. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And lastly, thank you again. I'm Dr. Georgetown. I have the blessed privilege of being the pastor of Evergreen United Methodist Church, and I am so blessed and such a privilege to be serving in Rankin County. And I'll tell you, it's one of the things, as Dr. Fletcher said earlier, the thing that is, when I first got to Evergreen, I didn't understand the strength of the community. But it was when I really did the research and understood that education piece, particularly as we live in a country today where still there are inequities in education, it is just remarkable to know that I'm a part of a legacy of folk who thought it necessary that all persons would be educated. And so, in this day and time, one of the things that the United Methodist Church pushes is that education is very important to us. And so, to be in a community that is recognizing our efforts, it is a blessing to us. And thank you for showering this blessing upon us today.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, next on our public comments, we have Steve and Pat Owens. If y'all would come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you, Board, first of all, for allowing us to come speak. Pat and I, and some of our neighbors, we live in Holly Bush Place subdivision. And we wanted to talk to y'all briefly about some flooding and drainage issues that we're having and have had for some time. Just recently, on Creekstone Drive, at 516 Creekstone Drive, that house flooded in the last few months. And in the last week or so, at 514, water was in that house. So we've got a problem there, and we have talked to people before with the county that says they can't do anything about it. That there's a drainage ditch that goes under Holly Bush Road, goes down between Sarah Fox Drive and Reservoir East, that they say, or that people have told us belongs to private property. I did a little research in the courthouse, and I found a deed where this common area that it's called, on Reservoir East side of Holly Bush, was in fact quit claimed unto Holmar Inc., which was a company Marcus Martin, George Danmark. Now, the land roll shows that in Holmar's name, and it's called a common area. And we just want to know if y'all can help us do something about cleaning that ditch out.
Let me just say something quickly, and then I'll let Craig. We are very sensitive, and we have hired lawyers to lobby for us at the state level and the federal level to adjust the statute where we may be able to in the future. Right now, the statute does not let government resources go on to private properties with tax dollars or resources. We are trying to get to that point. Craig, explain to the law why we're prohibited. If we go out there and do it, then we can be charged.
So when Holly Bush Place, which I think is the main engineer, is that why it's listed? So when it was planted, there are areas of the subdivision, when it comes on lines before it's developed out, that are reflective of the street and street rights in play. And those are the areas that the county accepts for maintenance when the subdivision is constructed. Common areas would be commonly entry areas and then associated easements for drainage in the county. If you were in the city, you wouldn't be up here talking about this because the city can accept drainage easements. The county does not accept drainage, it's not legally permitted to accept those easements. It has to stay in the street rights in play. So this designation of common area would be entries, areas that are generally from subdivision, it's an entry subdivision that are maintained by an HOA typically. In this case, that company, Holmar Inc., is still the title owner of all of the common areas of subdivision.
Right.
And they would presumably have responsibility for maintaining those areas. So that would be the place to go for relief about who's gonna maintain this. He owns it, so I think I know that that's a defunct operation. I don't think Mr. Martin is doing development anymore.
Well, he may not be, but the company filed a Secretary of State's LLC last year, or this year. They're currently, the company is still in business, Holmar. They may not be actively developing anything, but my wife spoke with him. And of course, he said that if he did own it, he would gladly grant an easement to the county.
I bet.
I'm betting it.
But, you know...
Just because he wants to give it to us, that doesn't convert it into public use property. What the county's jurisdictional mandate is, is the streets and street rights in play. And that's as far as we can get, except in very, very narrow circumstances.
I understand that. But what can we do to address this situation?
The neighborhood, in my opinion, those who are most affected by this, should come together and should go together to Mr. Martin and help him understand that, one way or the other, he's gonna have to do something about this. It's his problem.
Why should he?
Well, because you're going to say, if nothing happens, I'm asking the court to order you. That's what they say.
So the county can't do anything about it?
Well, we need to create a drainage district in our county so that we can do something about it. And hopefully, we're gonna make that happen within the next year.
I hope so. Where we can extend family resources. These guys would be put in a pretty difficult situation to explain to folks in bucket or physical, or the folks over in Florence or Richland, while we're spending their tax dollars to benefit one house or two houses in a subdivision. That's a different call.
It's not just one or two houses.
I understand that. At some point, we have to honor what the mandate, jurisdictional mandate is, which is you stay on the property that we tell you can be on, and you spend tax dollars only where we tell you to spend it. Or if you don't, if you spend money that you shouldn't, we will send you to jail.
Did I hear you say that y'all are responsible for the road?
Streets and street rights of the way. That is our...
Okay, so if you have a culvert that is too small and is not allowing water to go through, are you responsible for that?
We can certainly take a look at it.
Okay. Now, would that include the culvert that is on Holly Bush Road? Because y'all just redid that road, the culvert's way too small. Water is getting up on Holly Bush Road. What happens to the roadside?
Tim, would you address that?
Yeah.
Tim's engineer.
When we did the Holly Bush Road project, we didn't replace all the drainage on the project. We just, one of the boxes was structurally damaged, we had to replace it. But nothing was downsized. And the issue with upsizing something is there's people on the downstream side that you have to be very careful that you don't adversely affect them by adjusting a box too big.
All right, let me tell you the adverse effect. It is getting worse. This is what I'm getting from all of my neighbors. And if you have not seen this, we've got to deal with it.
Oh, no, I've been out there when it was planted, I've been out there when the water was backed up.
The question is, what are y'all gonna help us with?
We'll certainly, if the Board directs us, we'll go out there, take a look at it, see what we can do. But understand that the road project didn't downsize anything.
I know, but there was a problem before that, and you didn't correct it either.
That was a road widening project. That wasn't totally redoing drainage.
This problem existed. This problem existed. And I'm not the first person that's been up here before. My question is, what are y'all going to do to help this situation?
We're gonna do what we're legally permitted to do under the law, so that these guys don't end up in jail. That's what we're gonna do.
How do we go about checking with you to make sure this is done? Because I'm telling you, we're not stopping.
I understand. I think the first thing that needs to happen is somebody's got to communicate with Mr. Martin, who owns the property. And it's his property that's causing the problem. So I would start there.
You're saying we have legal right to sue him?
I'm not giving you any legal advice. What I'm saying is...
From that standpoint, we need, you hear from an engineer, we need the county to give us some direction on this.
Actually...
As far as what needs to be done.
Where it stands right now, ma'am, is that there are private property rights that are in play here. Mr. Martin's private property rights, the property owner's private property rights. Those are private property issues that should be addressed in a court of law. So the people out there who are affected, who are private property owners, who are affected by it, should come together, in my opinion. I'm not giving legal advice. But the way to do this is to band together, to go together, hire a lawyer, let the lawyer take care of the details about engineering or anything else that needs to be proven in court, and then go and force Mr. Martin to fix the problem.
We also, we're finished, but we have some other neighbors that would like a few minutes of your time, too.
I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to be with you. My name is Bill Adams. This is Gary Ward. We live on Sandstone Drive, there in Holly Bush Place. His yard and my yard and property, as well as two others on the other side of the ditch from us, stand directly in the path of some of this flooding. It's very fortunate it has not ended up in our homes, but I can tell you, in the six years I've lived there, the flooding gets worse and worse. And now it's starting to top Sandstone Drive. So that's becoming a public safety issue. This past week, we had a major rain event. The water got over Sandstone Drive. People are driving through that, and it's pretty fast pace. Our concern, and we want to be part of the solution, by the way, not just complain. Our concern is that a child or someone is gonna get swept away in that. We know it's actually happening on Holly Bush Road as well. So obviously, you do not take property from private landowners to fix drainage problems. And of course that you do, we want to be a part of that solution. Because we are willing to provide some property to solve that problem because we're actually flooding all the time. So you're not in the business taking liability. But we are concerned from a public safety, want to know if you have any jurisdiction. Once that happens, once it starts going over the road, do you have jurisdiction?
So as you guys know, there is a statute that provides that in the event that public infrastructure is undermined, is rendered impassable, is... And these are all judgment calls. And generally speaking, you've got to rely on your engineer, your road manager, you've got to rely on your own experiences. You have to be very careful with that finding. The legislature is very clear about it. It's got to be a serious jeopardy to your public infrastructure. And what I'm talking about is the street and street right-of-way that you already have maintenance responsibility for. If those off-street right-of-way occurrences are creating jeopardy to the requisite level, which again, nobody knows exactly what that is, then you can make a finding, and you can address the off-right-of-way issues at that point. We all know what that means. Once you start doing that in one spot, you will forevermore be doing it in all spots of Rankin County. And so, the rule itself becomes a vehicle where there is no rule. We have to be very, very careful about that. So it's gonna have to be a situation where your professionals can stand before you and say, "If we don't get on top of this off-right-of-way issue, we will be dealing with a much worse on-right-of-way issue in the near future." That's the finding that has to be made.
If it's okay, I'd like to provide some documentation to you that shows some of the flooding that's happening on...
I think it's probably best if we file engineer to have that. I want you guys to see it, honestly. This really needs to go to the engineer.
Something that I would like to state to you is that about four years ago, I asked the county engineer and some crew to come out and take a look at the situation. And they told me at that time that the culvert was indeed too small and set too high on Sandstone Drive. But the county would not be willing to replace that or fix that because essentially, my yard and other yards act as a bathtub, a detention. And he said, "If we fix that, everyone below you is going to be flooding worse." I don't doubt that's true. Okay, so I think what I'd like to have offered to the county at the appropriate time, it's legal, is provide a portion of my yard as detention area, but a controlled detention area rather than being wildly dispersed. Right now, water goes 125 feet from the actual ditch line. Some of that imagery that you have in front of you will show that. So this is like, essentially Sandstone Drive is a dam holding back the water, and the culvert's too small for it to escape. This is becoming a public safety issue. It's getting worse and worse and worse.
It's possible that a detention or detention area could be employed that might provide some. But as you guys know, wherever you try to hold water from the least, you have the potential for other unanticipated effects. So it's gotta be properly engineered.
Strikes me, I'm only representing myself, but I work for a company that does land use planning. I do land use planning. And again, I represent only myself. That significant hydrology study should be done to determine the appropriate level of detention or retention in the area, given the amount of development that's happened in the last, especially the last five years, especially upstream with the headwater area.
Especially the last two. The last two years, it's been the most rainfall we've had ever in the history of keeping records.
What'd y'all have the other day?
Just some afternoon gully washing.
I know. I mean, we had nearly, yesterday had two, three to five inches.
I would submit to you that we have inadequate detention policy in Rankin County for people who do developments, that there should be more done to control that runoff in our policy.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Gary Ward, how are y'all? I got a question. When they developed this property, who oversees and says everything is like it should be? Like the detention part? I mean, are y'all responsible for that?
When was this developed? Twenty years ago?
Let me add one thing on that, Gary. One thing on how it's kind of oversight and scene that comes about. We changed all those regulations about a year and a half ago? Two years ago, something like that. Before we changed those regulations, it was kind of like the Wild, Wild West, which a lot of these developments got out ahead of us. We've got numerous subdivisions of the reservoir that are in this same exact situation. Pine Brookoff, Huntington, Mill Creek areas, and things like that. But the problem with it was, is we had such a Wild West development ordinance that was out there.
Or lack of a development ordinance.
Guys would have...
It was there, but it was...
They would turn their planes into the county, and they would say, hey, we need a 20-inch culvert at this spot. And the board, I mean, the engineers would look at it, say, yeah, you're correct. A 20-inch culvert here is the right size based on the studies. But nobody ever went out there to check any of it. So what happened was, they needed to put a 20-inch culvert in there, no culvert whatsoever. Same way with all our infrastructure. So we've got numerous subdivisions across the county that are in this situation that may not be installed correctly. Now, the regulations are that we changed two years ago to a point, was we do site inspections of these things as going on. We don't want a ton of government oversight by no means. But to the same point, we've still got to be able to cut the cars where we need to be sure that things are there. What we can do is, and Steve will mention this, I'm sure, but we'll come back out and do the look and the study to be sure that the flow right, the mathematical equations of the water movement is correct on that same side. The law is a tough ban for the county on the road right-of-way side of it. We want to get it right. We want to be sure, if there's anything legally the county can do, obviously, we'll take actions to look at those things. But there's a lot of subdivisions in the same situation, a lot. And we're in that same type of constraints that even though we want to go in, we want to do things to help, legally we can't. That's kind of the same situation that's got you in...
Well, that's what I was asking. Y'all are responsible, though, for checking it to make sure, when they're doing construction, somebody comes up and says, hey, this is not done right.
Yeah.
Actually, at that time, the developer's engineer was responsible for that.
Right, it wasn't the county. Now, at this point, you're exactly right.
Now, the county is responsible.
Yeah, now, the bad answer to that is, we've got a bunch of horses that are outside the gate. There's no question about it. But we've got that fixed for future stuff. So we've got numerous areas in the county that's set up that way.
Since August of '17, we have the legal authority to make a developer uncover any infrastructure if we have not had an opportunity to see that it was properly installed. That's the difference.
We need to get in touch with, what's his name? He's a attorney, Colin, say, hey, he's legally responsible.
Your developers, I don't even know what his name was. They mentioned Martin, maybe, I believe.
You can certainly make that argument. As far as options that are available to the property owners out there, there's really only two. And that is that this board would take it upon themselves, using the statutory authority that they have, to make a finding that our own public infrastructure is in jeopardy. And then it can be addressed... Well, there's really three things they can do. The third thing, or four. The third thing they can do is they can ask the engineer to do a hydrology study to see if some sort of detention-retention approach might solve the problem, and make a recommendation there, and see how that might could be worked out. And then another is that you guys, together, would go to Mr. Martin and explain to him what the responsibility that he has is as the property owner that is allegedly causing the problem. And a court can order him to take remedial action. Whether he has the means, or the desire, or the willingness to do it, is a totally different question. It's gonna be up to a court to make that decision.
If the water starts topping your infrastructure, your roadways, can the county make him do it?
Yeah, so the answer to that is no, because we don't have a private property right. We would not go in and assume a private property problem to fix private property. We would only do what we needed to do in that moment to protect our infrastructure. That is it.
But if protecting your infrastructure requires a systematic improvement, where he has the responsibility and has neglected it to do it, if that is the solution to solve the problem of it's intruding on the county property, if that is the solution, can the county not make him do it?
No.
No.
We can't make him do it.
We really need to, we've got several other people. To give everybody time, we asked for three minutes. And I know these other people want to speak, too. And we're starting to cover the same thing. We can have a meeting outside of the boardroom, or if it's necessary, something like that, where we don't take up the...
That's fine.
Okay, thank y'all very much. Sir, did you have something?
Real quick, it's along the same lines in the same subdivision. I didn't know if you... I live in Holly Bush Place also. He is my neighbor. And we have a different issue, and it's probably a simpler problem, but we're on the first entrance at the end in the cul-de-sac. There's about eight houses down there. And we catch a ton of water that comes down from, what is that road up that goes up the hill?
That cross right there?
It's where Chad Dixon lives. That's a whole hill.
It's all his fault.
Yeah, it is. So anyway, it all comes down, and it runs the ditches onto my property. I'm the cul-de-sac lot. And there's a ditch that was put in when the subdivision was established that goes down by my yard, which has not been maintained properly. But I get all the water from everybody, there are leaves and debris, everything flows onto me. I was told the county can't help me with that ditch because it's on my property. But because it's not flowing through properly, it backs up, and it's coming over on him. It comes over the roadway. I think Mr. Gaines has been emailed by myself, as well as, my name's Wayne Carter, so... as, my name's Wayne Carter, so is his wife, Linda-
Morpheus.
Morpheus. But, they have had, they have made a huge ditch through the middle of their yard to help. Otherwise, it would be flooding their home.
It crosses the road there.
What I'm getting at is, I don't know if you guys are gonna ever send the engineers out. I'd love to meet with them if you do.
We, I mean, we've been out there twice in the past year and tried to look, and it is frustrating for us because we see it. I've been out there and seen it.
Well, our problem is not the same as theirs.
I know.
Theirs is back from the Creek Stone and Sandstone is backing up from Holly Bush. Ours really just needs our ditches cleaned better. And I know that y'all are saying that they'll do it along the right-of-way, and I think if we can meet out there with them, if a mini excavator could probably fix our problem quickly if, if the county permitted it, if the engineers said, "Yes, that's something the county can maintain it." If they can't, I won't ask, I can't ask any further than that, but I'd love to meet with them and just at least show them where our problem lies.
Mike, do you know where he's talking about? The ditch is something you can look at? Cause I thought it-
We'll take your ditching on the road, but some of them ditches are compromised between the aisles that are letting, like growing up, they were cleaned at one time whenever some ditch was put in, but they're on private property.
What happens is up two streets up from us, water comes down and over the years, it just erosion is what happens to everybody.
Right. I mean, that thing, third and fourth hill.
Yes, 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 right. And I'm at the bottom hill, and I had to cut ditches. I hired a hire truck over to cut ditches in my front yard and down both sides of mine just so it wouldn't come up in my house. It just is what it is. But, I mean, it goes down fast, but if it could be opened up like he's talking about a little bit on those ditches, it might just push more of that water out of there and it might not be an issue to us on our side. It does back up pretty quick when it backs up.
That's a county-wide issue. All right. Thank you. Thank y'all. Next, we have on the list is Jay Montgomery.
Thank you for allowing us to come speak. I myself am in Holly Bush Place as well. I live at 512 Creek Stone, and this year alone, twice, water's lacked about six inches from getting to my house. Lived there six years, and every year it's progressively getting worse. I agree that a, an extensive study needs to be done. The culvert, it was an opportune time when the, when the road was widened to look at that and increase that culvert size. I do understand that increasing the culvert size would push water further down, but by not increasing it, you're just holding water back. So, it's either hurt us or hurt them. But, I feel like the ditch on the other side can handle more if the culvert was open. I'm an engineer, but I'm not a, I'm not a industrial by no means, I'm just electrical. But, something has to be done, and we're just looking for guidance. Whether you can give us the right path or assistance?
Jay, we, we are, we've taken steps that no one else in Mississippi has ever taken trying to get legislation, which I want everybody to know, with that comes cost, cause what we're talking about costs a lot of money, and your subdivision is one of probably 75 in our county from Jared's, Bob's, mine, Jay's, which means tax increase. People don't like to hear that. I mean, because this is a, you're talking millions of dollars for one subdivision. But, we, we've gotta look at it and see what we can do, and we'll listen to y'all, just like we're doing now. We've gotta get the legislation though to give us, I mean, other than some isolated places that maybe we have a place that we can, within our right-of-way. We hope that the guys that we have that are lobbying for us are the best and that they can get, get us some relief.
But it's still gonna cost a lot of money.
But, we will have to have a budget to fund it, and we, we have set some money aside. We don't have, we don't have a money-making machine other than y'all, and we would have to do something, a taxing district or something to fund it. But, we are very sensitive, and it's probably our number one thing that we can't fix. I mean, we have not been able to address, and it aggravates.
Yes. Well, we just ask, you know, put yourself in our shoes. If the house floods, it's, it's a ton of money. We understand. We don't have buckets of it either. We would've fixed it ourselves. So, we just, when you see a problem and, and you know you don't have the means yourself to just fix it, you know, we're looking for guidance.
And really, we're in your same shape. We see a problem because of the statutes, we don't have a means, so we're going to them and trying to get that adjusted.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
This is, is a county-wide problem, and I sympathize with all of you. We had a road, some roads are over, about two and a half inches over them yesterday. We've had some deaths where the roads are flooded. In my district, we had two. So, I mean, I sympathize with everything you're saying, it's just, is what, exactly what you're hearing. And when we have these flash floods or these volumes of rain, I don't know really in some cases what it would take to handle some of the water. But, I understand, we do sympathize, but it is a county-wide problem.
Well, I got one question. We got one ditch running dirt on Sandstone, my and Bill's house. He lives directly across the street from me. Where's one ditch that handles all that water coming from Sandstone?
Right.
In the, in the street behind us? It's one ditch. And I just want y'all to look at this. This is my home, and I have eight-year-old twins. What if one of them fell in that?
It looks like my front yard did about two, three months ago.
His yard and my yard look like this.
He has a subdivision, the water gets to the mailboxes, and we're facing the same thing.
I'm Chesapeake and Pine Brook.
And it's done it three times.
Chesapeake. And I can't legally get in there.
We got one ditch that handles everything off of Stone.
We got, I'm with you. I promise you, I'm with you.
Like I said, we got those same pictures. I got one ditch that carries all this water from this neighborhood. And the problem, you know, they think, "Well, let's open up this ditch." The problem is that ditch runs on down to another neighborhood. Well, it's a flat land too, so if you open this up, and it's not on county property either, none of it is, I mean, none of it's county, it's all private. But, if you were to open it up, you're just gonna flood the ones downstream. But, it's the same kinda situation you're talking about. I say, it's, it's a county-wide, I was at somebody's house the other day, they actually have gone in and built a levee deal up at the ditch to try to keep the water coming over into their backyard. They've had to move the swing set because it's, it's eroded and gone in.
Yeah.
I understand.
Not that ditch is, I guess it's on my property, but I don't, I can't maintain that ditch. When there's trees growing in it. I mean, I don't have the equipment to come in there. If I did, I mean, you know, with all of them, it's because all of them are grown up, got trees growing in them.
The thing is, when you start, you know, you start here, where do you stop? Because the stopping point is wherever the destination of ditch basically goes.
The truth is, we had to start somewhere sometime, so we need to create a drainage district, start taking care of some of these issues, and hopefully we'll make that happen.
But, it's, it's gonna be costly. That's the problem.
Go ahead and tell your people at church and work, if we get it done, we gonna have, we've got to do something to generate the income.
And I don't mind for throwing this the money, but I'm gonna have to say that I shouldn't be liable for maintaining a ditch that's a waterway, you know? I mean-
We need to get, we got other things going on.
Yep. We've got Henry, we've got two more people on our, that signed up for public comments. Is Henry and Sherri Wiltshire?
We don't think he signed up. I think he's here recently.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Gary Ward?
Sorry, it's about you.
Oh, okay. All right. I'm sorry.
Good.
All right. Well, I don't think we've resolved anything, but hopefully we give some explanations and not, hopefully they don't take it just as excuses. So, next, let's see.
We did.
Brandon Cobb, you wanna come tell us about the mosquitoes?
Well, you follow up on some good ones, Brandon.
You know, I used, I used to be a little intimidated about some of the people y'all had in front of me, but I kinda learned it's a privilege to come see something like the celebration of the church this morning and all. So, I like to get to come, I get to come watch instead of sitting at my desk or out in the heat, so it gives me a little break and a little, get to learn a little bit, so I kinda like it now. But, y'all always have something interesting before me. Everything's looking real good. We're actually, our traps are showing lower numbers than what we would expect this time of year. Part of that is because of all the rain that we've had this year. Like you were saying earlier, it's one of the wettest years we've had since we've been tracking, the last two years have. And it's keeping so much fresh water in the ditches and the pools and stuff that they're not having time to lay eggs and hatch and grow out, or as much time. We're still seeing mosquitoes, but usually this time of year, between mid-July and about the first, second week of September is the worst part of the season. It's when we start seeing 200, 300, 400 counts in the traps. We haven't hit anywhere near those numbers. I think the highest trap, we had one trap during July that went to 122. We went and did some extra spraying in that area. Our traps have all been below 100, which this time of year is wonderful. We've been seeing a lot better numbers where we're doing the larva side, the larval surveillance in the ditches, again, because of the fresh water from the rains and stuff, so it's helping and hurting. One of the things that hurts is we can't spray as often because we can't spray in the rain, it does no good. But, you know, we're making up those numbers on the nights that it's dry. We got our drivers out there doing two, three, four zones a night, but we can't do it as evenly across the month as if the month was, was dry. You know, we could do it a little bit more scheduled and evenly across, but we are getting the county sprayed.
Brandon?
Yes, sir.
There's a couple of things you could do that would help a lot.
Okay.
Whenever I'm in different communities and they tell me that they don't, hadn't seen the mosquito truck, and then I explain to them, "Well, the best time to spray is probably while you're asleep, maybe at 10 o'clock." And they say, "Well, I remember 20 years ago when it come through, I'd be asleep and it'd wake me up. It's loud. Can you put, take the muffler off?"
Actually, some of those comments, and not just-
Turn sirens on.
Not, actually, in, you know, we do Brookhaven, we do Jackson, Heinz County, we're, we've grown really big here in central Mississippi. You know, I started out in Rankin County and kinda grown a little bit, but the other night, we had that same comment and meeting in Jackson, and I was like, you know, as much as I, I love helping the people, I get a little frustrated when I get calls like that cause I get a lot of-
Well, there's another, there's two parts.
And, uh-
They would also say, "I know they didn't come back," because remember Steve, we used to ride our bicycles behind it and it smelled, and it would be, you could smell it the next day? So, if you could put something back in there, that chemical-
Kinda that rotten egg smell that you have on the gas line, yeah. I thought about putting blue lights all over the car, although our fellow, our police would not like that, and then a megaphone on it like the ice cream trucks saying, "The mosquito man's coming," but then y'all gonna get noise complaints from us coming through. Yes, technology has grown so much, and with what we do, we have GPS tracking, we have tablets and information on all of our stuff that we do. The reports we send to y'all's got a ton of data compared, and back then, they were using DDT. That white fog we used to ride our bikes through, it's probably why a lot of us have health issues, cause we were riding behind DDT. We're not using that anymore. EPA has got rid of that. We're using something that's very effective, but it smells a lot less, it's a lot less cloudy. It's not actually a thermal fog like that was, it's an air-blown mist, kinda like when you use a little spritzer around a house like Windex or whatever. It's more that, but smaller, smaller particles, so it fogs and floats, and so you're not gonna get the smell, you're not gonna see the fog. The machines are built and tuned a lot better, and you know, our trucks are a lot newer, our equipment is, with this company, with Vector Disease Control, we have state-of-the-art equipment. It's the newest, it's the best, and it's just too quiet. And look, I have, I have honestly thought about taking mufflers off, putting sirens on, because people, you know, they're not seeing us. And we do, we drive between 7:30 at night and about 1:00 in the morning, cause that's when mosquitoes are active. And we, we wanna hit them while they're active, so we get more of them. And so, if we start, like, I've divided the county into 28 zones. There are one-night spray zones, it's enough for one driver to be able to spray that entire zone in one night. When I first came in the zones, there was five zones across the county, and they would spend a week doing one zone. And you get confused where you left off, and you might double spray here, not spray there. So, we did it as, got Mr. Lance, we made a map, one-night zones. But, if I start right here on this street, I may not get to this street over here till midnight. And if next time a different driver comes in, well, they wanna start on this street, they may not get to this street till close to midnight. So, it's not gonna be, okay, every Tuesday night, he should pass my house at 8:30.
Right.
Cause we have different drivers to do it, as long as the zone gets sprayed. And we have tracking, we have the maps that show when the sprayer was on, when the sprayer was off, where we've been, what night we've been there.
Well, sure, we don't wanna train the mosquitoes. Run outta here at 7:00 on Tuesday, he's gonna be gone, so we-
Yeah, so we've gotta keep them guessing.
I wanna mention one thing. School starts back this week or first of next. High school football game's gonna be back located around the areas on those Friday nights. Somewhere, some of your notes or whatever, I know that the first couple, three weeks of football season, starting back, mosquitoes get pretty rough at Pesca High School and a lot of the other schools around, but if we can make a Wednesday or Thursday adjustment to those schools, cause we're gonna locate a lot of people in those areas for high school football, starting back first of September.
We've already looked into that and addressed some of it, especially with Pesca.
Yeah. Pillahatchie, y'all taking care of Pillahatchie.
Which our, our Rankin office is right there in Pillahatchie. Old Kilgore Shop.
I just wanna mention that back on the same point, cause we're gonna have a large congregation of people at those events that, as a reminder-
We also have to look when those events are happening, cause we don't wanna be spraying past the football fields with all the people in the stands right now.
And you wanna do it on night, on the game.
I thought you had to have a good football field if you have folks show up. And we're looking at getting a schedule of the home games.
I thought so too, but that's just not what happens for some reason. Everybody in Northwest states will have, and then we're gone.
Y'all are doing a good job.
We never see the end of it out there.
You know, when I, I'll be honest, when I started this job, I needed a paycheck.
Watched the paper season as well.
Yes, I mean, we see, we get the first half.
Now, it's about helping people, you know, I've learned so much in these last five years working with this company, and just, we wanna help people, we wanna prevent disease. You know, we're out there fighting to protect the public health, and that's what it's about.
I think y'all are doing a good job. You've got us probably in the top 10% in the state as far as controlling our mosquitoes, and I don't, I mean, I think you're doing a good job, and every time we ask you to adjust, you do.
Thank you.
And we appreciate the reports we're getting.
Very much.
We're privileged to be able to work for the people of Rankin County, and since I'm one of those people, you know, I take my job very seriously.
Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you.
All right. Thank y'all.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Franco, they took up most of your time, so you guys-
Just cut out the part about the extension. If you cut that out, I think you're gonna be right inside the time, Frank.
I'm here to give you an opportunity to take your frustrations out.
I like, I like.
That's, that's my job.
I like.
Well, we should, we should've been here earlier, he could've helped us.
You know, I run into those type problems all the time.
I would hope he can clean ditches if he can, tire.
I have clean ditches.
Thank you, sir.
I've used a Kaiser blade and everything else in my government.
Yeah, I love people who know what a Kaiser blade is. I know.
You gotta be careful not to cut your leg off.
Thank you, sir.
It's real stuff.
This is just the latest update.
Yeah, I saw that in the paper.
Just, just to kind of give you an update on a couple of things. Courthouse, we're, on that, there's no, they had many increases in money, no change orders. We're still carrying contingency balance, about eighty, eighty-five thousand dollars. Mister Mina, we have one change order that we'd like to present, thirty-five hundred dollars. That, there was a credit in there of a thousand dollars, but we need to do some additional asphalt overlay to help with the drainage. The original project included putting some new asphalt overlay behind the gates, but that's not, that's gonna affect the drainage, so we, we're deleting that, but they've got to mill that area out in front and redo that, and we've had the county engineer look at it and looked at the price, and that was a thirty-five hundred dollar. And we would, we would recommend that that come out of the contingency, that would still leave twelve thousand, six hundred dollars remaining in the contingency on the misdemeanor. The schedule, the courthouse right now, it has October fourteenth to complete substantial completion.
You gotta hurry up.
I, you know, they are, we're there a couple of times a week, and there, at six-thirty, my guy's there, and I've, they're all working, so it's just, they're doing the best they can. The misdemeanor is basically complete except for some outside. The only thing holding the misdemeanor up is they're waiting on deliveries of the beds, prison beds, and connecting the washers and dryers, and then this, this little bit of a mill work. They are trying to complete the detention pond, there was a leak in, in the city sewer line that the city's aware of, and I think, I don't know if they've actually fixed it, but they're getting that. But anyhow, they're ninety-five percent complete, they're just, it, they should complete by the end of August, depending on when washers and dryers and the beds arrive, but for the most part, they're through. We did receive bids this week on the DHS re-roofing building that came in at a hundred four thousand, three fifty by M&amp;S Roofing. That was a hundred forty thousand under our estimate, and there's a couple of reasons for that. When we originally estimated, we thought we were gonna have to take the roof off, but after we did more investigation, we were able to put down a cover board and re-roofed directly over it. And then in talking to roofers, this has been a good time to roof it, and that's a very simple roof. We're ready to advertise the EOC building, which is a more complex, but we still think that won't be too bad, maybe two-hundred, two-hundred fifty thousand dollars. So, we're ready to put that out, especially right now, because it's the end of the summer, and all the re-roofing for the schools are winding down, and that's why we're getting a better bid market. Let's see what else is going on. I think you've given them information on the wall graphic. In the, in the courthouse project, we, in part of their price, there was a, a price to include a wall graphic. It's a two-story graphic that goes from bottom to top. If you're familiar with the existing Chancery building, you'll notice there's paintings all down those, so we were trying to tie that together. So, that was included in the original bid. We've had a couple of artists and interpretations of some glass, a glass panel mural includes, I don't, have they seen the pictures of it? Okay. We just, you know, there's a couple of options. We can go forward with that and make a decision, or you can take it out of the project and do it later as an independent. I don't think, I think the cost will be about the same one way or the other, depending on what you want to do. There are variations in cost depending on the media, whether it's gonna be a tile or some kind of painting or something else. As I say, what we've got in there right now is a wall tile, kind of a glazed tile that's in the form of magnolia. In our original design, the artist had a hands of justice, and there were some scales. We can alter that depending on what the board would like or if you want to-
I thought I was waiting till, see the whole project's done and kind of see where the money lies and that, at that point in time, but I think you said it could be done.
It could be done, there would be some, well, what we, what we had, what the artist that we were working with had designed would take about two days to do it, so the final product, he could come in on a weekend. Something else may take more, but it's out in the corridor, I don't think it would be major disruption, but it could be done in stages at night on a weekend or something of that nature. Or you could leave it as a blank wall.
I just don't wait.
Maybe, maybe somebody will step forward that's really talented and tell us they'll donate it.
There you go.
You know, that we, if we, if we hang it in our courthouse.
We could get Larry to take a big picture of himself, and he could probably pay for it and put it up there on the wall.
Well, that's certainly a viable option, so, uh-
No, it's not.
It's all-
Let me scratch that word, viable, please take that out of the paper, but, uh-
Bob will miss you, man.
So, really, and then, I know it's late on the agenda, but if, there's two pay applications for the two contractors, if y'all have any questions about that.
Where, have we, like, approved the roof? Did we do that last week?
You approved the advertising, but not the bidding, I don't think, the, the price.
What?
We didn't approve the warning of the contract.
Oh, yeah. I don't see it.
I thought it was on the agenda somewhere.
We'll make sure that we handle it in the additional bids and sign about that.
All right.
It was a very good price, and we've worked with this company before, we just finished a project in Vicksburg.
Hundred and four to hundred and sixty-nine was the prices?
Uh, yeah.
Roughly?
Yeah. I'll tell you what, I've got the bid calculation, actually.
We had nine, nine bids, which-
I just happened to be up there doing that.
That influx of bid market. And really, all has to do with-
Thank you.
It's a lot of pretty bids.
One-ninety was the top.
Yeah, we had one-ninety, which Roofing Solutions, I'm not sure, we had even had a bidder out of Louisiana, and actually, we had a plan with them out of New York, called me, and was, I don't know what they're doing.
Have y'all worked with M&amp;S, correct?
Yes, they, they are very good, they've been long established. We finished a project in Vicksburg not too long ago, church re-roof. They're, they specialize in the, in the single membrane roof that, that we used on this particular project, so they're good roofers.
Has this roof got a lot of units on top of it?
No, and now it's got some vents, but no units.
Good.
That was the other thing, it is, it's a very clean, it's a monoslope, Jared, the, the EOC building is gonna be more difficult, if you're familiar with it, it's three or four different pieces put together, got an interior gutter, but, uh-
What is it they like on the detention, so you said, just grade the facade, the facade and stuff?
They've got, we've got landscaping budget and the detention pond, they've got to finish, and then this milling, if you approve this change order, we need to get that going to, to add that additional asphalt and mill it and add the asphalt, and that's, ye've reviewed that, I believe, yeah. So, that's, that's really all they like, other than waiting on, so they're waiting on the beds, they're gonna install the prison beds, and the, they're working on washer and dryer changes, but they need them to hook those up, I think.
Is there anything holding up getting Mr. Dipp to the box of this book?
Uh, other than, no, other than the fact that we have not issued the substantial completion. But, and I'll, I can find out when that is, but other than that, no, not to my knowledge.
But there was a request that, with respect to some release of liability policy, that type of thing, and putting it on the county's coverage, and I can now let that happen until we get a C.O.
Right, and really, until we issue the substantial completion, it's still a contractor's responsibility for all that, so we, we've got to do, and I have to check, I'll be honest, I can't remember, I know we've done one punch list, but I don't know that we've done the final, to issue the substantial.
I'm not gonna bludge it, I was just making sure we did.
Hey, has the sheriff hired everybody he needs yet for that? Never mind. I didn't know if we were waiting till the new budget to hire them or not.
It's in the new budget, I think.
I'm sure it is.
I'm pretty sure it's in the new budget.
It'll have to be.
I think it already, the budget's got now because we anticipated being in it in April of May. I think you've already got it, budget-
I think we did, yeah, I think we anticipated four or five.
That's correct.
Yeah, well, it should be on the end.
All right. Do, do we need to take any action on?
Yeah.
What are we saying yet, no?
We're gonna do that in additional business on the roof.
Okay, okay.
Yes, sir, I'm, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about that artwork.
All right, do additional business.
We're directing the architect, but we're not gonna, we're not gonna act on the artwork.
No.
That's, that's coming out of the contract.
The only L issue was the change order for the misdemeanor to, to come out of the contingency. That, they need, they, that needs to be acted on one way or the other so they can-
I'll make a motion to add it, same to agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Jay to add it, second by Jared, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, Jay makes a motion to approve this change order?
Mm-hmm.
Most approved.
You got to second it.
Jake, second.
Jared seconds.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
We're, we're still looking at being about two-hundred thousand under the, the bond issue. We have not gotten all the money reconciled, all the debris, but we think, we've been told, we're getting some money back on that. And, uh, so, any other questions?
No, sir.
Thank you, Tom.
All right, the whole business?
Make a motion to approve July fifteenth, twenty-ninth, August one minutes.
Second.
I have a motion by Bob to approve those three, second by Jared, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Make a motion to approve consent.
All right, we have a consent agenda, and Bob makes a motion to approve, Jay seconds, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Sullivan, come on down. The price is right.
Yeah, that's exactly right. Call me Bob Barker. Acknowledged receipt of objections for the two thousand nineteen tax assessment, as of now, we have none, but they have till five o'clock today.
I can't believe that.
We work so hard in our office to make these things not happen.
All right, we have a motion by Bob, second by Jay. Any other comments or, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
It's like the first time ever, isn't it? Have we ever had a year of nobody?
Oh, yeah, we've had many, but in two thousand eight, when we went up on the assessed value, two-hundred and sixteen million, with a nineteen percent increase in assessed value, that started happening more often.
Yeah.
All right.
I have a petition to change the assessment to two thousand eighteen, real person.
Motion approved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Bob, second by Jared, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I have a C request voided at sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen tax sale for pin number forty-seven, eight thirty-four, should have been exempt.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion to approve by Bob, second was a tie between Jay and Jared, you pick it. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And I have one other item.
We have, we will recognize Lance Cooper.
Yeah.
You do it for me.
Yeah, MEMA is requesting some information from the county and has to do with computers, so we'll get that to Lance.
Okay.
All right, John and I received a email from Thomas Brewer at MEMA, who is their GIS specialist there, the nineteenth of last month, requesting our parcel and address data. They have hired a company called Crisis Track to come in and create them a disaster assistance program, apparently statewide. They are asking for all the counties to basically relinquish their address and parcel data. I told Thomas that, number one, before we would release any data, MEMA and/or Crisis Track would have to sign an NDA stating that they wouldn't use this data nowhere but for themselves, and that I would bring it before you to see if they were, if y'all were willing to either give them the data or do as we typically do with government entities, give them the reduced price and let them purchase the data. So, I'm gonna bring that before y'all today, y'all can decide how we want to handle that.
But if they hired a outside company, that means they're gonna be giving this outside company the information.
Exactly.
But they can't control an outside company, what they do with it.
No, and then there again, would be the reason we would want an NDA in place for both organizations, MEMA and/or Crisis Track, but can, I mean, can they monitor that now? So, you know, if that company wants to use it somewhere else, you know, unless we find it and are able to pursue that legally-
Or sell it to somebody else.
Right, or sell it to someone else, but there again, you know, even if we do sell it to them, who to say they won't use it again also? There again, that, why we want to put the NDA in place for both organizations.
No way we're gonna monitor that, though, really?
There's no way. There is no way.
There's no way to monitor, Jared, it's just that we find out that they're selling them the, that we can effectively block it through the NDA provisions.
Right.
I'm not in favor of giving it to them, I think they should pay it like everybody else.
Well, I think we sell it like a penny of record, though. Half a cent, actually, of government, yeah. So, I mean, the government price for it is, is extremely small-
Yeah.
-for, for both entities, the addressing and parcels.
I mean, I'm all for wanting to help them, you know, but I, I just, I'm-
What is it actually gonna do for them?
This is MEMA, right?
This is MEMA.
What's it gonna actually do for them?
Supposedly, when we had the last storm that came through, you know, South Rankin County, we had to go out with EOC and do all the damage assessments.
How much did we get back on that reassessment?
Zero.
None.
So, um-
I don't recall specifically, so y'all can, y'all can correct my error if I'm wrong about this. I don't remember MEMA helping us to pay for our GS, GIS mapping data. Do y'all remember?
They did not.
Okay.
The only people that did, that was the Rankin County School District, they did.
Lance, how much were we eligible to get back on that reimbursement?
One point five million?
We hadn't got any of that back yet?
No, I can address it for you if you'd like to. Absolutely. And, uh, just, just to kind of bring you up to speed, I had no idea that, uh, MEMA actually contacted the county requesting anything until Lance asked me about it Friday, so this was news to me on Friday, which is neither here nor there. On the storms that came through, there's two thresholds we have to meet. The county minimum is five hundred and thirty-five thousand, which we far exceeded that, and there's also a state minimum of four point three million dollars. You have to meet both thresholds prior to getting any qualifications for reimbursements. There were six counties that were involved in the tornado outbreak on Easter, and out of those six counties, three of them decided that doing paperwork was, uh, just, I guess just too much work for them to do, and they weren't gonna do it. So, therefore, we were at the numbers I've been told, a couple of hundred thousand dollars shy of meeting the four point three million dollar minimum. Therefore, we were never even put in for a federal declaration. This Crisis Track-
I didn't mean to get word speaking, I apologize, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that wasn't my intention, that wasn't my, that wasn't my intention, because you're gonna get mad at me. I'm just telling you, I wasn't my intention.
Yes, everybody should know that Rankin County went way above and beyond, and we had every piece of paperwork, we turned everything we had in, it wasn't on us, it was the counties that surrounded us that decided it was just not prudent for them to do it, and here we are holding the bag. But that's, that is how the game is played, so, in, in my opinion at this point, until such time as Rankin County on a windshield assessment reaches a damage of four point three million dollars, I don't see no need to go through all the manpower and the hassle to, to do it. Mike Harrison's group had probably about four hundred pages of paperwork that they generated, just on one aspect of mine was eighty-seven pages long on a report, so we had a tremendous amount of man-hours that went into this, so, I mean, it is what it is. The Crisis Track, I was told, is four years out.
I wanted to mention that just to kind of parlay back into what Lance is asking, so, Lance, if you would, just start back on what your request is from MEMA again, after that right there. Sorry about that, I just, my mind ain't clear, I've been worried about this MEMA money the whole time.
Basically, what they're requesting is we give them the data, address data, our, our point address data and our parcel data. So, what I'm presenting to you is, do we give it to, do we give it to them, or do we charge it for them like we've done everybody else?
One point four million.
One point four million. Good answer.
No, I mean, I, I guess that's kind of my conversation to let maybe you and Mike go over there, I prefer you do the talking in word because he, you know, but I, I would go have that discussion with him on the same side of that, I mean, that'd be my take.
Wait, you said that they paid for the school districts?
No.
No.
The school district paid us.
School district put money into helping for this project.
Remember when we were doing it?
Oh, oh, I got it.
Yeah, well, whenever we did that, the school district was the only entity that put in money to help pay for this project.
Yeah, I thought you were saying MEMA paid for something, you know, okay.
Negatory.
Again, I reiterate, I see no reason to give them a break.
I, my, I leave a whole lot of it up to y'all giving us your recommendation, y'all work with it, you know what it took to build this data, and how much it cost us, and we know.
It's, you know, it's something we maintain on a daily basis, between Melissa Bryant and John's office, we, you know, we maintain this on a daily basis, you know, trying to keep this as accurate as possible, so yes, it's still, you know, we paid a lot for it, and it still cost us to, you know, continue to update this stuff.
Mema has money.
Well.
And I'm not saying we're trying to gouge Mema, by no means.
Well, we're not trying to gouge any, you know, I mean.
And I'm not taking that stance of it, but to the same side of that, you know, our time is worth things.
I don't, I don't even know, I mean, with them having a private entity that's gonna be handling it, that I even want to sell it to them.
I don't either.
Yep.
I'm gonna throw one there, it's gonna get out there.
I would like for y'all to give us a recommendation, and then we can.
Well, the, I mean, the private entity comes to us, as long as I pay the price, they'll give it to them.
Well, there again, you know, if the private entity comes to us, we will charge them the commercial price for it, which is two cents a parcel, and, you know, they can have it.
Right, but that's why we're coming through Mema.
Right, they're trying to come through Mema to either get a government price or get it for free.
Yep, all right, okay, uh, right now, my deal, whatever the private fee is, the private people are gonna be the ones using it.
Yeah, that, that, that's who's developing the software.
But if y'all say no, Steve, that's just too hard.
I'd start with that number right there, the private fee, and then figure out where we need to go from there.
And regardless, I still want both entities to sign an NDA, Mema and/or Crisis Track.
What's your thoughts, same thing?
John ain't there, won't turn with any of it.
No, I'm with anybody.
Well, do we have to let them have it, period?
Yeah, and the thing about it, you can, because as we update it, it becomes outdated anyway, so, I mean, yes, they will have a fairly current version of it, but it will not be a continually updated version.
Well, then I would do just that, I'd do the private market.
This commercial.
Price. Huh?
I would start there and see where we go, I mean, and go have that discussion with it, and explain to them, I didn't mean to get word back in there.
Mr. Marshall, just, just so y'all know what this is for, it's for damage assessments, as they have communicated to us, and they're being pretty tight-lipped about what all this thing will do, the reason they want all this data is because it prevents them from having to ask a question, do you have flood insurance? Is this in a flood zone? Do you have homeowner's insurance? Click, 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 you don't have to ask that question. We, the ones we're using now, we just simply ask the question, if we don't know, then we just mark unknown on it, get a GPS for it and send it up. All these damage assessments are really irrelevant, they're used just to see if we've got a baseline number to give to the governor, so he can send it up to Washington DC, if they say, yeah, y'all met the threshold, then we take all the damage assessments and all the manpower that went into that, throw it in that trash can, because FEMA is now coming down here because they don't trust anybody.
Right, and they're gonna redo it.
And redo the exact same thing again, so it's just for preliminary numbers, it's what they use it for anyway, so, and for what it's worth, we did just get five thousand dollars from them just the other day, so.
Five thousand?
Yeah. Little leftover money people to save, again, ENPG grant money, some folks have said they didn't want, I'm just not gonna spend all my money, so, we tried to get more than that, but we couldn't, that's always the deal, so.
All right, thank y'all.
Thank you, Lance.
Bridgette? You're up.
Good morning.
Morning.
The first item this morning, I'm asking approval of Axon Enterprises Incorporated's sole source for Taser brand products, we did this in November sixth of two thousand seventeen, and we just wanted it updated on record.
Now, Bridgette, how did you prove their sole source? Did you go get Taser brand by it?
I did. That's why I'm getting all this extra overtime, going to all these places now.
First to approve.
All right, Jay makes a motion.
Second.
Daniel seconds, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. The second item we have is a bid opening for the term bid bridge installation, we received two electronic bids. The first bid is from Baker Pile Driving and Site Work, and cut from Covington, Louisiana. There were fifty-eight components that they had to bid on, and they submitted a price for each one. The second bid is from Key LLC out of Madison, Mississippi. Their bid is also in order for each of the fifty-eight components, and I recommend those be taken under advisement.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Bob makes a motion, Jay seconds it, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes, taken under advisement.
That's my favorite combination of motions, Bob and Jared.
All right, you got something else besides this? I'll make a motion to approve the July work and the proposed August work.
All right, second. Bob makes a motion to approve Harrison's accomplishments and plans, I guess, Jared second it, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Parker?
Yes, sir.
Come on down.
Thank you.
First item I have on the agenda is a development called North Shore Landing, phases three, four, five, and six, and we recommend approval of the preliminary plat on that development.
I'll make that motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion to approve by Daniel, second, by Bob, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, next item I have on the agenda is Andrew Chapel Road Bridge Replacement Project, I'm recommending approval of paper request number four to Joe McGee Construction Incorporated, in the amount of thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and one cent.
I make your motion that we approve that.
Second.
Thank you, Bob. I made the motion, Bob seconds, any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, the third and last item I have is authorization to authorize a chief LPA official, who is the president of the Rankin County Board of Supervisors, to request activation of the Spillway Road Overlay Project through the Mississippi Department of Transportation LPA Project.
I'll make that motion approved.
Second.
All right. Daniel made the motion, I think Jared, you second?
Yep.
Jared seconds it, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, Craig.
Mr. President, I'm making a motion to consolidate A through D to set the public hearing for those respective places for August fifteenth.
Second.
All right. Craig, if you're okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Cut down on some wind.
More than enough.
All right, Bob makes a motion.
You can't cut down the wind in a tourney, ain't no way.
Yep, yep.
Bob makes a motion, Jay seconds it, any other discussion?
Makes me wanna just.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion pass.
Makes me want to just echo Jay that I'm gonna miss Bob. So, item E, a public hearing for Shane Roberts' conditional use permit, this is three twenty-eight Phantom Landing Circles, District Two, we will open a public hearing, Mr. Roberts is seeking a conditional use permit to operate an equipment rental and sales business at three twenty-eight Phantom Landing Circle, it's a twenty-acre parcel, it's zoned RE1, the property's been used as a commercial, as commercial for over twenty years, it's previously occupied by Site One Landscape Supply, the proposed business will have lawn and garden equipment, small excavators, tractors, trailers, and multiple hand tools, all of the equipment will be stored on the inside of the building, there is no outside storage. The proposed hours of operation are Monday through Friday, seven thirty AM to five PM, and Saturday, seven thirty AM to one PM. Your staff, we're gonna, that public hearing is open, I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to the Shane Roberts' conditional use permit, please step forward. Is anyone here speaking opposition on that matter? Mr. President, we've got, your staff has some possible conditions for consideration, so if, with your indulgence, I'll march through those conditions, no outside displays, no open storage of any kind, everything must be inside the building, that's a condition. Signage, a sign on the building can, will be allowed without a permit, any additional signage would be subject to the specifications of our sign permit, under our building regulations. The conditional use permit shall be only for the applicant, it cannot be transferred to any other party. We would like to suggest that the conditional use have a, an expiration date, so that the board is given an opportunity to further consider the matter, given the fact that this is residential, I think there was some concern that this area is moving in the direction of residential, and it may be that a commercial situation there under conditional use is no longer appropriate, and so we would, we would suggest that you consider an expiration date. The applicant must timely remit any personal property tax rendition forms to the tax assessor, and timely pay all personal property taxes in Rankin County, one or by tax assessor. Appreciative of the fact that we're starting to think about those kinds of things as part of our conditional use, and I'll just tell you, not because I'm trying to pick on this particular applicant, I'm not, obviously, they're not paying any personal property taxes, nothing's been assessed yet, but what I see, from my standpoint as board attorney, and the opportunity that I have to help collect unpaid personal property taxes on commercial operations in the county, we have a number of folks that simply don't see that as much of an obligation of any, and so, this is a perfect opportunity for me to let you know that, that your team has effectively collected close to a quarter million dollars this year in unpaid personal property taxes, so that helps, obviously, to the bottom line, but it's also designed to illustrate to you guys that we get good compliance for the most part, but there is that portion, some two to three percent of commercial businesses in the county that are not paying their personal property taxes, so we see that as, as an important item to place in here and condition the actual conditional use itself on the timely remittance of the rendition form, and on the timely payment of the tax, if they don't pay, then they lose the permit, the conditional use. A buffer area, at this point, your staff does not see a need for any type of buffer, the existing building sits well away from the property lines, and there's existing vegetative buffer along the property lines, so we just make that a point, and it appears that the ingress and egress is sufficient for the vehicles, but we want to make sure that the ingress point is far enough inset onto the property, so that if, in this case, you've got lawn equipment, and I would expect there to be some trucks and trailer type of tandem, so we want that ingress to be deep enough off of the road right away, so that we don't have trailers out in the back of the road trying to turn in, okay?
And of course, the, they sell it, the condition goes away?
Yes, sir, actually, it's, it is only for the applicant, not transferable.
The only thing I'm just not a hundred percent fond of is the expiration date on the conditional use, that's the only thing I'm not just totally in love with, the point of that being, is if they sell the business or whatever, then we come back to the same type of site, but as long as they're doing everything they're supposed to be doing, and doing those type of things, I'd rather take that requirement off of the side, the other ones, I believe, are very understandable, inside stories is what we're wanting, the signage, we've got that straight, non-transferable, just as Jay mentioned, egress in and out, be sure we get the trailers in and out of the driveways, and then the buffer, I think we're good there, but if something was to come up, we could discuss the buffer at that point, buffer being trees planted, maybe around it, if we need something of that nature, I don't see that right now, so, that'd be my thoughts on that, so.
So, Daniel, it sounds like your motion would be to allow the conditional use with all of the conditions stated, with the exception of the expiration.
Yeah, and if possible, I'd like to hear from the Roberts', also, to be sure they're good with that, if y'all are okay with those conditions. Mr. Roberts, y'all good with that? Okay, thank you, so that, yes, sir, that'd be my motion.
All right. Daniel makes a motion, Jay seconds it, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Mr. President, the next item, item F, under my section is a public hearing on the Anthony Jones Conditional Use Permit at Greenfield Circle, District Three property, Mr. Jones is seeking a conditional use permit placed at twenty nineteen sixteen by eighty manufactured home at Greenfield Circle, it's a one point four oh acre parcel zoned RE1A, parcel is located adjacent to his father's property, RE1A allows manufactured homes as a conditional use with one dwelling per parcel, this time we'll open the public hearing, I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Anthony Jones Conditional Use Permit, is anyone here speaking opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak on that matter, we'll close the public hearing, at this time it'd be appropriate to take action.
Do you have anybody call, comment about anything? Do we put any other conditions on these uses when somebody does a mobile home, and do we need to, or anything?
Are there mobile homes in Greenfield Circle?
There's one across the street, and there's a mobile home park right down the road from it, you know, I asked them, because I could have done this by Ben's review, but I asked them to come to the table, because there are some nice homes in the immediate area, because they've all been notified, but it is family land, I mean, the gentleman that's that's still there, I think his staff lives across the street, or next door, so, I just wanted to give the folks out there an opportunity.
Have they been contacted? They have been contacted?
Yeah, oh, yeah, I put a sign up, all, don't have to put it.
They don't get a notice by mail that the sign was posted relatively advanced in the bid.
I'm surprised.
Man, I was too, I, you know, but I gave them the opportunity, so, I mean, you know, we went through the process, that motion to approve.
All right, Bob makes a motion to approve, Jay seconds, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. President, item G, under my section is consideration and potential action on a resolution that declares that Rankin County makes no objection to the installation of sanitary sewer by the City of Pearl within the defined area of unincorporated Rankin County, that is immediately adjacent to Whitfield, and so this is a way for the City of Pearl, which is installing sewer infrastructure within its municipal boundary, to connect to the West Rankin Utility Authority Sewer Interceptor, which requires them to go through county property to get to, so they're only asking for permission to be able to do that along Highway four seventy-five, it's gonna be in the right of way, and by the way, we're not controlling any of that, that's gonna be DOT to control exactly how that, where that's situated, so.
Why don't they ask them?
Sir.
Why are we even involved in this?
Well, we have to be involved because they have gone with the Mississippi Development Authority for cap loan, and the procedure says you gotta get permission from anybody that you're affecting.
I'll, I'll make the motion to approve stipulating that they annex in my book subdivision at the same time they're out there.
That's a condition.
See how that goes over?
You laugh, I told them they need to do that.
Yeah.
I think Jay warned him one time, didn't you?
Yeah.
You weren't about?
You don't, you don't have an objection to that.
Really?
Yeah. Oh, that way, man.
Let the record reflect, Richland has no objection to that annexation.
Jay agreed that quick, something not right.
Bob was like, oh, I reconsider it now.
I'll make a motion to approve.
You seen what he's done with that bro?
Bob's made a motion to approve, Jay seconds, any other discussion?
Should have learned from last time.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. President, item H, honorable Pat Sullivan is here, Mayor of Richland, and so I'm gonna ask Pat, I'm gonna step forward, this is consideration potential action by the board to adopt and authorize the board president's executive memorandum of understanding, that's between the City of Richland, the Rankin County School District, and the Rankin County Board Supervisors for the construction of and paying for the extension of Spell Drive and construction of a new bridge to connect Spell Drive to Oriole Avenue in the City of Richland, so, the contributions are there laid out for you, City of Richland will contribute an estimated, well, will contribute a hundred thousand dollars of the estimate of the cost towards the project, the school district is contributing a hundred thousand towards the cost, the county's initial estimated portion is a hundred ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents, and if, in fact, the cost of the project goes over the total of those estimated amounts, the City of Richland and the county will equally share the cost exceeding the initial estimated amount, so that's enough of that. Pat can explain to you about the project, and hopefully address any questions you might have to make.
This is a project, hi, how y'all doing? Thank y'all, thank y'all for what you, what you do here in the City of Richland, and I'm swapping hats for my assessor job, did my city job, but this is a project that's been going on for about two years now, we have major congestion on O forty-nine, and I have a school and a nursing home at the end of a one-way street, and as of right now, if anything were to happen right now, there'd be no way to get anybody in or out there at the school, being able to put this road, connecting road with a bridge, that's the expense of it, is a bridge, to be able to loop the traffic around will save a lot of headache and pain and aggravation on O forty-nine, as y'all well know, forty-nine, Highway forty-nine is being worked on, and every little artery going in or out around the city is being well used, I just found out today, the nineteenth, Cleary Road will be closed for thirty days, that's meaning, everybody that's coming from, coming from Heinz County, coming in, or coming on the western part of Rankin County, is going to have to either go south, or gonna have to go north in our, in my city.
Down this road he's talking about?
And this is down the road, down, down O forty-nine, so, if we can get as much off of forty-nine, we would greatly appreciate it, and as you say, it's been, it's real hard to get the school district to contribute money during the bond issue, but they were able to, to ante up some, because the city's ending up some, I just ask your permit, ask you to go ahead and dip into that road and bridge.
It's mostly a bridge, isn't it?
It's mostly a bridge at the cost of it.
That's what it is, the bridge.
Yes, sir.
Can we all split it up evenly?
Evenly?
That would be fun.
Well, I mean, my, my issue when we go into that is the, I use y'all's asphalt money to bid anyway, so, this is, this is as close as I could get it.
This is, the bridge is the, this is the biggest part of this, is, we'll come out of bridge.
Right, yes, sir.
And the asphalt is, you're using our contract price.
Yes, sir.
This, this will help, two things, help get the, right now, when it, because it's one lane going into that road, and it comes right back the same one, all that traffic, similar to the one we did, that has been a praise to the board, that we did at Steen Creek Elementary on four sixty-nine, got the traffic off, yeah, got off, got off the four sixty-nine, and this is the same thing, you got traffic backs up, gosh, even on a normal day without this construction stuff, way back, because it can't get in and out, and so forty-nine, And so 49, 049 is completely basically almost shut down. So this will get that traffic, we fill in most every bit of it in, onto, off property, so.
How much of this is going to be bridge?
How much of the bridge? I believe it's right at $200,000, $200,000 pretty much.
Oh, this is all going to be bridge?
Yeah, most of this is, this is going to be.
I'm sure you come up with all this, didn't you?
Our engineering, engineering guys came up with it, yes, they did.
Mike, what's our, have you, were you in on this, Mike? Do you know anything about it, Harrison? What's our bridge account look like?
Oh, we got plenty, buddy.
Well, another thing, in Richland's events, they've not had any bridge issues in a long time.
Well, I just want to know what it's, it said 191, our portion, I was curious how many.
There is a breakdown. Engineering Service did break it down to, and I don't, I don't have that in front of me right now. But there is.
Is the MOU in their package, the actual MOU? Okay, all right.
I think it's in that.
It's exhibited to the MOU that breaks specifically by service, by line item. All of it's broken out, and it shows each party's contribution. So it's in the MOU.
Apparently, my definition having plenty of money and Ms. Oster's definition of plenty of money are two different, so you may want to ask her again what that number is.
Yeah. Ms. Oster? I asked two the wrong thing. I asked Mike, and I asked Bob. The bridge.
Well, according to Bob, we have plenty of money.
I know he does. The bridge fund.
I don't have the exact figure right now on the bridge fund. I didn't bring that with me, but.
Is it more than $200,000?
Yes, more than $200,000.
Then we'll go with it.
City wants it all.
All right, like I said, they've not used any of the.
Sounds like we talked about the bridge fund about a month ago. And soon as I, by the time we get the next Albor and play in, you know, we'll be back around five or six.
I find it in the bridge, but I just want to say anything over that, it needs to come out.
I think he's getting the figures for us right now. I believe that's.
No, he's not.
That's not correct.
He's going to get coffee. Whatever comes out, the money's got to come somewhere, so it needs to come out of your district.
Yeah, you're talking about anything over the bridge?
Yeah, I mean, if it's all bridge, that's fine, but where are we going to get the money if it's not?
I think that, if I read this thing right, is that we're on the hook for the bridge part. And anything over that is split three ways based on, but we could.
Two ways.
City and county.
But it has to be, we could just say ours is tricky bridge. Anything outside of bridge, it's a front.
I hope it's 191.
What's the breakdown of it though? I don't know. The breakdown, is it all bridge or is it? It is?
Whatever.
Me, I don't know.
Look, I mean, I do know that there's a few other things that are going to be coming up.
You didn't design it?
Yeah, I mean, because of all of the traffic.
Somebody else in y'all's firm designed it. I guess you didn't design it, I got you.
Yeah, Pat?
I mean, I'm going to tell you things that are coming up. Because of the major growth there in Richland, all right? We're topped out over 500 businesses there in the industrial area there. So it generates a large sum of money for Rankin County. This road is the back way to all of those businesses. So I just want you to know that the monies is, the monies are being generated to help fund this. This is a small portion, a small way of just to help with congestion. And we were able to get some participation with the school district. I was glad that.
Are you, are you confident that the bridge would be, take up all the county, 191,000?
I guess.
Did the bridge, okay. I would, I would make a motion.
The numbers were pretty tight to begin with, so.
I'd make a motion that we approve this up to the point of the cost of the bridge. Anything over that, instead of just coming right out and saying we're going to split it this way, bring it back to us and let's look at it and see where we can get the money. That would be, Mike?
Well, I mean, if it's a, if the entire project's a bridge project, is it?
No, it's not. I don't know what the project is. I mean, is it just?
No, they got those 200,000.
It's a dawdling.
No, they got this, the road goes down, the paved road goes down. And they're doing a, they're going on down onto some, I believe it's county and school property or county, I mean, city or school.
City and school.
They're doing the loop around and coming out. And then they got to cross this ditch to put them on this other road. So the bridge, the bridge is necessary.
So that road's good to that spot?
No, the road right now stops here.
It's a dead end.
Who's building the road? But this project?
Huh?
This project builds the road?
Yeah, right, that's where the other money is coming in. Road stops here, they're going to build from here around.
How far is that, you think?
I don't know. I don't know how far.
It's less than 1,000 feet.
It's the bridge, mainly they can't cross the ditch. And the ditch, the bridge a little crossing, they put them on another road, on to another road.
It ties in another road on the other side of it?
Another existing road.
So it's a thousand feet of road?
You're just, yeah, you're just connecting this road to this road, but you got to cross the ditch.
And the bridge?
Yeah.
Build the bridge.
Why can't we just say we're in it for up to 200 or 191 or whatever for the bridge?
You can say 200.
I mean, if you have, well, you said two, I mean, you know, you were saying you thought the bridge, but for this.
Those are good numbers.
Come back to us.
I don't see a reason to come back. I mean, I think we can solve this problem.
Where are we going to get, well, we got to see where we're going to get the money. Because we can take, we know we can take this out of bridge. And then we can decide where's this other, if we have.
Yeah, I guess you go to the same place, keep getting the extra money we do for this little drainage problem we've had in up in the.
We hadn't seen any of it.
Let's not worry if we've been.
Yeah, all of them.
I hadn't seen any of it.
Just let him start going down that ditch.
Now, I guess my question is on that, for Mike's bridge fund.
Yeah.
Where do we stand? I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to give away, 100, I don't want to give away what he does.
Yeah.
Well, I just want to be sure he didn't have something else tied into that money before we give it to Richland.
I make the motion to approve 191,757.50.
I guess he don't want to ask you, Mike?
For the bridge.
You don't want to ask Harrison?
I'll second.
He's got a few million.
All right, Jay's made a motion to approve 191,757.50 for the bridge.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion?
This is just the bridge, right? I mean, I just don't know what the motion was on.
Well, I mean.
That's not what the motion is.
I know, but I mean, he's just saying just for the bridge, so.
If y'all will allow me, for clarity's sake, what?
Well, you could have come in here 30 minutes earlier.
Hey, you got me soaking.
We got a motion and a.
Yeah, so I think Jay's motion, just to clarify for the record, Jay's motion is that we're going to be in the deal and we're going to authorize and execute the MOU as long as it's clear that what the county's contribution is, is the cost, the expected cost of the actual installation of the bridge, which is estimated to be 191,727 dollars, 757 dollars.
We don't have anything on road anyway.
That's the county's portion. So what he's saying is approve the MOU, except we need to modify or amend the MOU so that it's clear the county's not contributing or participating beyond the installation of the bridge up to an amount that shall not exceed 191,757.50.
Can the bridge go in for 191?
Pat's got it covered.
Those are the numbers. Those are the numbers that we're getting.
We're the exact word, not the.
I mean, you know, all I can say is that I'm on the hook and the county's on hook.
Yeah.
I don't come to the county for much. I got some extra participation. We're kind of sharing the wealth here and trying to get the road, road cleared off here. So I would greatly appreciate y'all's participation, okay?
We just got the biggest chunk.
Well, because of the bridge.
The road and bridge.
I understand, I understand.
In our taxes, I mean, our city citizens pay into the road and bridge. We just ask you to participate with that.
All right, we got a motion and a second.
Wait, now, that also is going to let you, you're still getting the asphalt accounting contract.
Absolutely. And that bids us, and we tap in all of that bridge.
I mean, that's, in this motion, I'm saying that all is still active.
Essentially, what we're saying is the project can proceed. The county is going to participate. It's just that if it goes beyond, if the anticipated costs go beyond the 191,757.50, somebody else other than the county is going to have to make up that difference.
Yeah.
All right. We have a motion and a second.
Or, wait a minute. Motion's second, but other than the county, you can come back to us and talk about where the difference is.
Yes, we're open for.
We can always do that.
Yeah.
And we, we won't know until we get to the proposal of the project, so that'd be great.
That's right. All right, okay. All right, this is my last time, I'm going to do it. We have a motion by Jay, a second by Jared. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Hey, Pat, the bridge going over the railroad, where are y'all at on that?
They should be letting, we're waiting on a signature from the railroad for over a $5,000 amount of money that we want to give them. But anyways, as soon as that's going, they should let bid, so.
How long have y'all been waiting on that signature?
It's been a good two, three months right now, so.
Are you serious?
I'm serious. And we've gone all the time.
Railroad folks are awful, buddy.
They, they are not here in the United States.
Look, I know all about it. Remember, it's ridge down South Florence, good Lord.
I just want y'all to know that your drainage issues that you had.
Yes, sir.
My board meeting, or the city board meetings are exactly the same way. We have 41 subdivisions where the drainage is just one going into the other, opening up another problem. I would strongly encourage the county to do a countywide drainage.
But they're not going, how many people want to pay?
Countywide drainage, what?
And get an idea on what to do, all right?
We've done, we've put 50,000 into that. We've already done that.
Well.
We have an idea, we just need legislation with 350,000.
And I, and.
We need legislation and money.
I agree. We need to go to, we need to go, go to Washington and get some money.
I don't know we really want the authority.
But we got to have the authority.
That's a different discussion.
But let me, let me tell you what, all of that water that's there, that y'all were talking about, the majority of it goes to Richland.
Right.
And if you, if Brandon has a three-inch rain, Richland Creek is full, and then we get one in Richland, our water has nowhere to go. It cannot get to the Pearl River.
That's right.
If the Pearl River is full, I'm done.
Just like, just basically.
Noah has come home.
I know, we've come home, so I mean.
So there's no.
I feel your pain.
I mean, it's like, what do you do?
You know, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Bear.
Uh, Mr. President, I think we're on Item I now, which is.
Is there any way we could contain, contain all this water and sell it to Jackson?
Yeah. Consideration of and action to approve a memorandum of understanding between Rankin County and Airgas. This is regarding the road improvement project that's called Dixie Road, Andrew Jackson Circle, Lofton Road down in Star. This project's been in front of you guys literally for years. This is our safety enhancement project at Star related to air gas. We're trying to prevent the, the, the shooting off of an unguided missile by air gas, gas trucks trying to cross over a very dangerous railroad crossing. And so you guys have heard about this project for quite some time.
All right, do we have a motion?
I make that motion to approve.
I got a motion by Jared, second by Jay. All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
One question I have, how quickly can we advertise it?
At this point, now that the MOU is in place, Jared, we're prepared to move to the next step, which is, is working both with Airgas and MDOT with respect to the actual construction drawings. This really was the major hitch in the project at this point.
And I'm ready to do that.
So that's been addressed.
One more problem down there.
Yeah, this, this project's in need of getting going.
Yeah.
All right, we, we just, that motion passed, so. I want, and if I'm here again next term, I would like to see if there's a way that I could hire Jared as my lobbyist to you and Tim and Mike to get my projects going like his.
Ain't no doubt about it. Ain't nobody can get it going fast like Jared.
I'd work with you on weekends, Jared, or something, you know, when you're not.
I got some fence to build coming up.
Can we hire him as a consultant?
They're putting it off.
Why don't we find anybody else to go lobby for us other than Jared? I agree with you.
All right, approval.
This conversation is making me very.
You see, you know.
Let's go to Jay.
It's by design.
You get more deals.
I'm about tired of welding.
Item J is the approval of a, to, the approval to grant a drainage easement to the city of Florence. This is along Price Street and authority for the board president to sign. This is actually a piece of county property that's got a drainage easement that feeds out onto a city street. There's, there's no reason for us not to grant them a very, very tiny drainage easement on this piece of property that belongs to the county.
Make a charge report, though, couldn't we?
You could if you wanted to.
I'm just kidding.
Motion to approve.
All right, Bob makes a motion. Jay seconds. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Motion passes. Ms. Wanda?
Okay, Item A, new Rankin County Courthouse facilities. Approval of pay application number 25 to Chris Albritton Construction Company in the amount of $557,976.22 and authority to issue the check. The contractor did request seven additional days due to the adverse weather condition. The architect reviewed, in their opinion, he's entitled to two additional days.
Negative. Do you want, we need to break that motion out.
I knew that was coming.
I make motion to approve the payment, but not the days. Second?
All right, have a motion by Jay, second by Daniel. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Maina facility.
Slade, we're teeing this up for you, you know, when we get to the end of the.
Yes, sir.
Legal representation and why the days weren't there.
I mean, what, what was the expected initial finish date?
About six months ago.
Yeah.
Where is it?
March, right?
March.
It was March?
Maybe April.
Yeah, March, and now we're October.
That's just a generic request, Jay. Have you picked up on that yet?
We've almost given a whole year, so.
We just, generically, we add for.
300,000 over and six months late.
All right, I'm sorry, Wanda.
That's okay. New Mr. Maina facility. Approval of pay application number 18 to Flagstar Construction Company in the amount of $256,234.88 and authority to issue the check. Do you want me to say the last? They have requested eight additional days due to rain. The architect is recommending two additional days.
Motion to approve the entire motion as written.
Well, they're ahead of time, so.
Yeah, I'll second that, they're way ahead of time.
All right, we have a motion by Bob, second by Daniel. Any other discussion? Any other discussion?
Say that again, it's because they're way ahead of time.
Yeah, I do, I have a question. Is the motion for the two days or the eight days?
As written.
It says a request in eight days, the architect is.
Two days.
Architect's recommendation.
Was that 10 total?